Rolls is exempt.
As long as the church, if the church takes it all over and continues to be a tax exempt status, continues to maintain that, then taxes won't come in, but it'll still be on the tax rolls, still be taxable property, they just won't pay the taxes on it. If they lose their tax exempt status, or if they decide to sell it, it would then generate tax income.
So, are we not getting the cart before the horse here? Didn't you say they had sent something to be approved, and it's still sitting on the table?
That's correct.
But they want us to abandon a piece of property before you approve what they've presented?
Yes, sir. They can't come in and we can't approve their development of the site without them having control of the property. Right now, they would be looking to use the private right-of-way for their, I mean, the public right-of-way for their private use, which isn't something that we can approve under the site plan. Ms. Thompson can...
Okay.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Coleman, they submitted a site plan showing some of the requirements for the proposed church to be located where this county right-of-way easement exists, and so that doesn't meet code because they don't have permission, they can't construct the parking that they're proposing in that area. So, the first thing they have to do to submit, to get the site plan to at a reviewable, approvable state, is have that easement abandoned. If it's not abandoned, then they would have to revise their site plan to reflect none of their property's developments in that right-of-way. So, this is step one, because they're proposing that they want to use the right-of-way for parking, for the church and the commercial uses. So, that has to be decided first, before then the site plan can move forward. Yes, sir.
Pam, who owns that property outright?
We haven't reviewed the site plan yet because of this issue, so the applicant and applicant's agent can tell you who owns it today. But, the right-of-way will be split between the two current sides, so half of it will go to the commercial development on one side of it, and that will be taxable. The ultimate long-term use is for the church for half of the easement.
Actually, there's three owners of the property, and I know, I can't remember who the other two are, but one of them is Tommy Stroud.
Yes, sir. Parcel 1 is Glen Haven Baptist Church, parcel 2 is the Shops at Frederica Condominium, and parcel 3 is Heritage Management LLC.
That's who backs up to this property, is that what you're saying?
No, they own it.
Oh, they own it? They own the property.
Okay, alright. So, before you go, just to clarify, so they own it, so really what we're doing is we're abandoning our right-of-way?
Yes, sir. When this plat was recorded, and a lot of subdivision plats, they show future right-of-way in case the government wants to come through and put in a road for thoroughfares or do any improvements, and we don't own that property, but we have a right to restrict the owner's use of it. So, what they're asking is for us to remove that restriction, so that they can use it for parking.
And, you know, I don't really have any heartaches specifically over this, but multiple people have asked me about abandements in general, and this is a good time to suggest that there are those that believe that these rights-of-way have value to the county, and that if we abandon them for no value being received in return, we really are not doing our best for the constituents we have in Glen County. And, so, I'd just throw out, for future discussion, that we really ought to consider that these things do have some tangible value, and, you know, if it was a private property situation, I can't see anyone just walking away from a situation like this and not asking for compensation. An example I would use is if your family had a property, and my family had a property, and it'd been the family for years, and my family had a right-of-way across the back of your property to a desirable lake, and that was great, because we didn't have to go down the road and around the traffic to get to that lake. But then you decide to sell, which is fine, but the new owner says, "Well, I don't want the Murphy family walking across my new property." And you come to me and say, "Will you abandon it? Seriously?" I mean, you know, maybe I would out of the goodness of my heart, but that probably isn't the way I'd end up doing it. I'd ask for some compensation. So, I think that going forward, in a situation, in a church situation like this, where all we need, we only have the prayers that we can, you know, engender for our current situation, and I'm not gonna, you know, stand in the way, but I really think that the attorney and you should really review the statutes and say, "Hey, you know, in the case of a small drainage ditch somewhere, it's one thing, but, you know, when I first saw this, and I saw it was 6,400 square feet, and I thought we owned it," you know, alarm bells went off, but I get it. Sorry. I know we have more important things to move on to, Mr. Chairman, but I had to get that off.
No, 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 that's fine. You know, and typically, typically those abandements go on the tax roll, and county receives revenue and that sort of thing.
Right. Pennies on the dollar, or something significant?
Yeah, pennies on the dollar.
Okay, thank you.
Every penny counts, I guess. Alright, any other questions for staff? Alright, it's a public hearing item. Those wishing to speak in favor of the application may come forward at this time. Mr. Bryson, please state your name for the record, and...
Good evening, Larry Bryson. I'm agent for the applicant, which is Glen Haven Baptist Church Shops at Frederica Condominium Association and Heritage Management LLC. I'm basically here just to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Bryson, what, excuse me, Mr. Bryson, what would be the change, or the new design? Have you thought about if this didn't get approved? I heard Pam say that you would have to go back and submit another site plan. What exactly would that entail? I mean, I'm here in parking lot here, and, I mean, what would that entail as far, I mean, have you thought that far ahead here about what if?
Well, to some extent, yes. We had prepared another plan and presented that to the planning commission some months ago, and in the process of discussions and community comments, came about this idea of using First Street as the parking area. It would benefit not just the church, but also the other two businesses, because it adds parking and value to their properties as well, and relieves that area as far as parking, because through the week, the church doesn't need the parking, so then the parking can be used by the commercial areas, so it's sort of beneficial to the others. The prior project that we had submitted, one scenario had actually parking that would back out into the street, which we would have had to have asked for a variance for that, so we, this would avoid any situation such as that, and would also help on the number of curb cuts that we would have.
Did I understand that currently it's used as a throughfare from one street to another?
There is a sort of a dirt little path that weaves through there, that obviously someone, some people drive through from time to time.
But, if this were to change, you wouldn't be able to do that?
Well, there will then be a paved driveline between the two rows of parking that goes street to street, so it will become a permanent connector from street to street, that can be used to relieve some traffic.
To drive from one street to the other?
Yes.
But if they put the asphalt out there and put parking spaces on it, and people got cars sitting there you couldn't drive through?
Right, but this one, this is a, is a street, though, that will go all the way through. It's the driveline for the parking lot. Can you get back to that? There you go. So, on your right is Palmetto, on your left is Palm Street, I think that's Palm. So, as you see, the driveline, you've got parking on both sides of the driveline, the driveline connects both streets. There you go, that would be the driveline. And that's a two-way driveline, so it's basically a street that could be used for some interconnectivity.
Okay, and then, back to my original question, if this didn't take place, what is your reconfiguration there that you would have to do?
Well, then, on the top of the page, you see some several lines which are currently a ditch. We would have to relocate that ditch to create some parking on that side, take out several of those trees, and then also, we've got a green area in the back, right there, that we would have to create some parking on. So, we were trying to simultaneously save those trees, and create some green area behind the church for a sort of a play area for the kids in the community.
Kind of trees are they?
It's a mixture of oaks, there might be a few pines in there, but I think most of those are oak.
Larry, are you saying the church is gonna go in there?
Yes, Glen Haven Baptist, and it's a small church, it's only 2,700 square feet.
Yeah. Presently, without the church there, how many lots are you talking about using, you know, to put that new church on?
Oh, lots?
Yeah, there's a number of lots there, right?
There is, yes.
Okay.
I think there's six lots, not counting the...
But it's a number of those smaller lots that...
It is, yes.
I guess we call them the substandard lots?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, here we go. Two, three, four, five, six. What have you got?
So, it's possible that somebody could come in and...
Seven.
I'm just trying to use my little brain here this afternoon, but...
There's seven of those lots.
Okay, seven lots. And I guess with our ordinances in place, someone could come in and try to put seven small homes on those seven lots. So, seems to me, with the church going there, if it takes up seven lots, and then, you know, a lot of people's minds, and I'm not taking, you know, I'm not looking at it that way particularly, but I'm just thinking, you know, with all the discussion about the substandard lots and...
Correct.
We wouldn't have that to worry about, we'd have a church sitting on seven lots, instead of seven small homes and seven lots. Okay, is that a fair characterization of what I'm looking at?
Yes, it is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is that not overly simplified, though? I mean, there are already homes there, and, you know, I'm not trying to be antagonistic, but look at what happened to the previously placed Glen Haven Baptist Church, a little over an acre, over there off of, I guess, Atlantic?
Right.
And, that was sold, and all of a sudden, underneath that one structure, you know, some enterprising soul finds 16 substandard lots and tries to load up the neighborhood with 16 homes on that, and ever since then, it's become a point of contention and a tremendous eyesore. So, where I'm going with this is, future. So, I agree with Commissioner Browning to a certain extent, and I do think that the alley of the road between Palm and Palmetto looks horrific right now, and I think that what you all are planning on doing is fabulous, it's gonna look great, it's gonna be a major upgrade to that area, but my concern would be, if in five years, they decide to flip that area and sell it because it's been, you know, made to look so desirable, could they then, could somebody come in and take down that 2,700-square-foot church and build seven substandard, you know, lot, homes there?
Dr. Murphy, if I could answer that question, in order for this church to be approved and get a permit to build, they're going to have to record a consolidation plat, where they take all the lots existing today and merge them into only one lot, so that whenever, if in the future, if they sell, they are selling one lot, and whoever buys it would have to follow the codes in place at that time, if they wanted to subdivide it. So, those seven lots, six or seven lots would go away.
So, you're suggesting that I should be as enthusiastic as Commissioner Browning about this plan?
You have whatever level of enthusiasm you choose, that's definitely up to you.
I think that's great.
I'm just letting you know that the seven lots that are underneath will not be there when this church is constructed, it will be one zoning lot.
Very nice.
The chairman is very enthusiastic about churches tonight.
Pamela doesn't want to answer that, but I will, yes.
Well, I think I'm feeling a little enthusiastic there.
Alright, let's get this thing back on track here. Any other questions for Mr. Bryson, the applicant? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishing? Pastor, come forward.
Let me see if that works, you know, it's fine. I'm used to talking real loud anyway, okay?
I know.
That's what I do. But I'm Pastor Gary Cumbey, Glen Haven Baptist Church. I've been the pastor of Glen Haven for 10 years now. We're in favor of it. I guess you know that we did sell the property because we had a building that we had to do something with, too many issues and too much money going into it, and we believe God provided this property for us to be there. The vision of the property for the old church was to be there, to be there for the Glen Haven neighborhood is a mission of First Baptist Church on St. Simons, and as we saw the issues that we had to deal with, we'd rather put money into ministry than into buildings and property. And this is available to us, we thank the Lord for that opportunity, and we're asking you to go with this abandonment, because it goes with the vision of the church. We will look at it, what are we gonna do for the next 30 years? Keep fixing an old building, or have something that we have the land paid for, and the property paid for, and the building paid for, and be able to do what we believe God wants us to do? We're here to bring the gospel of Jesus Christ to this world, and create better citizens. I know you'd rather have people that knew the Lord than you would some others. We help people, lives change. And even though I might not be here, you know, 30 years from now, don't plan on being pastor at 100, but I do believe this is what our vision is of the church, and God's vision is for us, and we think we can be an asset to the community there. We would be a good blend from the commercial to the residential being there, and it'd be a whole lot easier for us to deal with things. And we, glad we have some good neighbors beside us, and some good folks that are wanting to go with this abandonment with us, and be sharing the property with us and parking, I think it's a win-win for everybody. So, if y'all have any questions, I mean, I'll answer anything I need to.
Questions for them? Thank you, pastor.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Julian Smith again, and I have my timer going here. Under other circumstances, I think I might be speaking in favor of this application, but not under these particular circumstances at this time. Let me begin with the public notices in the paper. There were several notices about this abandonment in a public hearing. Not one of them mentioned the Glen Haven Baptist Church. The application did not give any, I'm sorry, the advertisements did not give any parcel numbers. All it said was, "The property's adjacent to Adelaide Paint." That was inadequate notice. The letters to the abudders, the required letters, were inadequate. In the first paragraph, we're told that Larry Bryson's the agent for Tony Stroud and Walter Rofolsky, the owners have applied. He, for some reason, doesn't mention, this letter doesn't mention, that the major beneficiary of this abandonment would be Glen Haven Baptist Church. The letter also, from the county clerk, also informs adjacent property owners that a county ordinance requires that they be notified of the abandonment application and allowed a public hearing. Now, public's not allowed a public hearing, the public is, the county was required to have a public hearing on this matter. The, so, the agenda item before you does not mention who the applicants are. You have to go to the site plan and read the very small print. If you read it in online, it's very hard to follow. The county engineer's letter, the first one I saw, was dated September 9th, he corrected that after I called that to his attention. The county attorney's letter to Mr. Hours for transmitted to you does not mention the identity of any of the owners. I think this abandonment at this time by you would be premature. The IPC deferred their decision on the special use permit. At the same time, they deferred or postponed back in February, talking about the site plan. Now, the site plan that you have before you in this application is different from the original site plan. I think this matter really needs to go back to the IPC, and some things need to be thrashed out. The new site plan you have tells you that they're required to have, what, 15, I'm sorry, 18 parking spaces, I believe it is, as did the old site plan. The original site plan had all of the parking on the parcel now owned by the church, and it would have been very tight fit. The new one explains that there are nine parcels, I'm sorry, nine parking spaces on the west side of the abandoned street, and that there will be nine more parking spaces on the other side. But the nine parking spaces on the other side would be on other property. You do not have before you any kind of deed, or a letter from the other property owners, that they are going to lease or sell those nine spaces to the church. So, I think you need to have another public hearing on this matter, after the, some decisions have been made by the IPC, after the IPC has recommended to you to grant a special use permit, you're the only ones who can do that, and so on. So, please, please don't do this tonight, and good luck with your decision. I think the best thing to do is to defer your decision, send it back to the IPC. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing commissioners?
For a motion that we accept the staff recommendation to approve this abandonment.
Say it. Have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Can I just ask one quick question, Mr. Bryson? So, as I said previously, it's gonna be a vast improvement, what I've seen over there, but the pictures and my personal observation, spending some time, this past weekend, there's a large mature oak tree behind Adelaide's next to, is that gonna be preserved or raised? Preserved? Good job. Thank you. I'm very much in favor of this, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Pamela, can the IPC approve a site plan unless they, we abandon this first? I didn't ask you a question, sir. I don't understand...
Commissioner Stanball, you're correct. The IPC cannot approve construction of anything in county right-of-way without your permission. If you remember earlier this year, the reuse of the old Decoys Restaurant had to come to you because they were changing their use and couldn't get their site plan approved, because some of their required parking was in the county right-of-way. So, you all have to give that permission first, and then they can move forward through the site plan with the process.
That's what I thought. So, it'd be kinda silly to defer back to the IPC, you can't do anything until we do this. That's all, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Okay.
Alright, any other discussion? Have a motion in a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your hand. That is six, one opposed. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve all items on consent agenda general business and consent agenda personnel, except for any item any commissioner so wishes to pull, and I think we have an update on item 15.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve consent agenda items for general business and personnel. A motion in a second, any discussion?
Commissioners, that update Commissioner Browning's referring to is an update that the Personnel Committee made this afternoon to the amendment to personnel policy, so that's the update.
Okay. Alright, any other discussion? All those in favor of approving consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, thank you. We are under a state of emergency declaration, and I'd like to ask Joe Wiggins to come forward at this time. Mr. Smith, ask a very good question, and if you would sort of clarity for all of us regarding mandatory evacuation and how this is going to proceed.
Yes, sir, Chairman, for the commission, thank you for having me here this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to help push the word out to our citizens about the mandatory evacuation. We will be starting the mandatory evacuation at 8:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. We've been getting a lot of questions in that I hope maybe we can clarify tonight. People are asking if they will be restricted from returning to St. Simons Island, that is not our plan. The causeway will be kept open until conditions deteriorate and it's found to be unsafe, that is decided by the Department of Transportation, and they would be the organization that would stop people from going back and forth onto St. Simons Island. We plan to continue the evacuation until such time as weather conditions prevent us from getting people out of Glen County. A mandatory evacuation is just that, we can't take people out of their home or force them to leave, but we are strongly urging, based on the information that we have in front of us, that people not stay in Glen County. Number one, the weather conditions themselves will be brutal, and it could be catastrophic for our area, but also, one of the things we've talked about is the fact that because of those weather conditions, there could be a period of time that people will not have water or sewer, clean water to drink, or septic systems that work. They would also run the risk of being without power for a period of time, especially our functional needs or medical needs, folks, people that have some type of medical condition or problem, that they have, are on home, oxygen, or any type of medical apparatus that needs to be operated, that would be putting themselves in harm's way. So, that, does that kinda answer the question? Is there anything particular that you wanted to know?
It does not answer my question, sir.
Okay, what can I ask?
Basically, you're saying, if I leave the island tomorrow morning before 8:00, or anytime after 8:00 tomorrow, or Saturday, to help my wife get settled in another house we own on Highland, that I cannot go back to the island?
No, sir.
So, I cannot go back to the island?
No, sir, you can go back to the island. We will not restrict access to the island until such time as weather conditions prevent that, and in all actuality, it will not be Glen County that restricts that, it will be the Department of Transportation. Once you see wind speeds of 40 to 45 miles per hour, tropical storm-force winds, which we believe we may start seeing as late as Sunday evening and as early as Monday morning, it becomes unsafe... it becomes unsafe to have vehicles on that causeway.
In other words, unless the wind is blowing at 45 miles an hour tomorrow, I will be able to leave the island and come back.
That is correct.
And that would be true for Sunday, for Saturday.
That's correct.
Maybe for Sunday.
That's correct.
Thank you.
As many times as you want.
Yes, sir. And the reason we do that is so that there are people that will be traveling back and forth, and we realize and want to work with our citizens to do whatever we can to get them out of harm's way. If they need to make two or three trips back and forth to pick up stuff, that's fine. But once we start reaching that tropical storm-force winds, that 40 to 45 miles per hour, it becomes unsafe.
I understand that perfectly.
Okay, sir.
If the wind gets...
Yes, sir. It could change direction tonight and go out to sea, and I would be the happiest man in Glen County.
Okay. Jay, I could even understand that. Let's talk about household garbage. I don't know if you know about this, or if that's something Dave Austin needs to talk about, but I think I just learned here in the last hour that the garbage pickup schedule for the county for tomorrow and Saturday will not happen. So that means that people should not be putting their garbage cans out by the road.
Yes, sir, because, well, they become missiles. I will defer to Dave Austin. We have discussed this. I have been in on conversations to that, Mr. Commissioner, but Dave would be able to answer that better. But I do want to encourage people not to take up lawn furniture, trash cans. Things have become missiles when the wind starts blowing.
This is the same thing that happened last year, if we remember. Once we call for a mandatory evacuation of all of Glen County, then what happens is Republic, who is our trash pickup people, their folks evacuate. Therefore, there's nobody to drive the trucks to pick up the trash, et cetera, et cetera. So that's kinda how this thing happens.
Correct. And it's not only the county, but also the city.
Yes, sir. It's also the city.
Republic handles all, county and city. We talked to them. The two Public Works Directors got together today, and it doesn't make sense to have trash cans and tell people you're evacuating and also have them put their trash cans out, pick up their trash, and then put the trash can back and watch it blow away.
Exactly. Well, that right there, that right there, I can understand, but you need to understand, folks like me, we got garbage cans full of garbage, so what makes sense is that folks like me, Republic or whoever, they go around to ask when they get rolling again next week, 'cause that didn't happen last time. I understand on the front end what you're saying, but on the back end, and you know, I've...
We hope to learn from our mistakes from the lifetime.
We had people with garbage cans that were full, and they didn't get tended to for two weeks. And they need to be the first ones on the list, so whatever day. And, you know, folks are gonna be asking us, what day are they gonna be rolling? I know we don't know that now, but as soon as we know that, we need to be prepared to put the word out, they're gonna be rolling.
We're working on a plan to figure out how to service the trash cans when you have half the people coming back.
Yeah.
And you tell them to put their can out, and then they come back the next day and they want their garbage because all the refrigerator stuff is in there. So we're working on a plan. But it's probably gonna be just a lot of rotations, but we're gonna be working on it. We understand the problem.
Thank you, God.
And it's exacerbated this week by the fact that we didn't pick up on Monday. So we also have Friday and Saturday garbage that's not been picked up.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's right, because Monday was a holiday, so they gotta come around Saturday. But it was a big problem after Matthew.
I was painfully awake everywhere.
So you all mean, I had the city manager and the head of public works come pick up my trash. Y'all didn't get that? We don't have that kinda clout, Commissioner.
This presentation is gonna be limited to public officials, and I think the mayor would like to make, say something.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to recognize the mayor. We're working very closely with Jekyll Island and the City of Brunswick to speak with one voice, so we want to appreciate him being here tonight.
And, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, thank you so very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I know we're talking about trash, and I know that's very important as well, but this hurricane is coming towards us, and we got to be ready and be prepared for it. To that end, the City of Brunswick has issued a declaration of local emergency, which give the city, or give me the power, authority to declare the curfew and also to declare that for evacuation, mandatory evacuation, which is what the county is doing as well. So we are in conjunction with what the county is doing, and we speak as conservative voice that whatever... We are in seek with the county, that's what I'm trying to say. And we will be stationed at the EOC, just like the county as well. We have put out primarily the same audit that you guys have put out. So I want everybody to recognize that when we speak as this community, we speak in for Glen County and also speak for the City of Brunswick as well. So please take that for note. We're here, we are concerned. I want to make sure the citizens of the City of Brunswick is taken care of just as well as all the citizens in our county as well. So we issued a local emergency. This is it. It should be forwarded to Mr. Monfort, and, sir, this one is for you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so very much.
We look forward to the partnership, Mayor, and we're gonna get through this thing.
Well, I look forward to you being my bunkmate, okay?
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. A little bit too much information, Mr. Mayor.
I've got something about an air mattress today.
Mr. Smith, that is a quick question.
Could you please repeat that, Mr. Mayor?
Real quick. Let's get it behind us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just happened to look at the Water and Sewer Commission's website and discovered that the mainland water and sewer will not be shut off. However, the St. Simons Island water and sewer will be shut off at 2:00 on Sunday. So I think the citizens should be aware that in order to prevent catastrophic shut-off, the island is not gonna have water and sewer service as of 2:00 p.m. on Sunday until whenever they can get it back up. And I just thought that this was a good opportunity to let that information get out as well.
It is, Ms. Smith, and thank you for bringing that to us. The reason that we're shutting the water and sewer down on St. Simons at 2:00 is, number one, the hurricane's coming, and it will facilitate getting back up much quicker if those pumps and whatever remain shut down during this time rather than leaving them running and shutting down themselves. So that is a planned approach. But again, the mainland water and sewer will remain on. That's where, obviously, the hospital, the jail, the EOC, and, I mean, Brunswick High where the first responders will be, so...
Mr. Chairman, you might want to touch on the curfew.
Well, yeah, and I'm glad somebody mentioned, the mayor mentioned, the curfew. Jay, you wanna speak to that?
Yes, Sir Chairman, that is something we would like to add to the state of emergency. That's something that you would have to add to it, and in the past, it has been from 12 to 6:00, and I would encourage that to be what we go with for this event also.
That's what it'll be.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, if I may, just what dates do we want to put that in place?
Yes, in White Cross. Yeah, that's what we voted, yeah.
Tomorrow, Tuesday, with a possibility of standing based on...
All right. Anybody got anything else for the good of the order? You know, again, I hope we're speaking with one voice and an accurate voice. And, you know, there's a lot of social media and all that stuff out here, out there, and we need to make sure that you're looking at the county's website, city, and that you're getting the correct information. And so if you guys were the press, we'll encourage folks to...
So there are no shelters for general public in White Cross?
Oh, there may be some.
I don't know.
Shelters for the general public?
In White Cross, are there any?
That is being handled by Red Cross. The word that I have now is that the closest so far is gonna be Macon.
Closest shelter?
Yes, sir, at this point. As a matter of fact, our Need a Ride program, where we pick up local folks that do not have a ride out of town, and they get on the Board of Education school buses, right now, it's my understanding that that's where they'll be taking them.
Okay, well, speaking to that, where is the locations?
The pickup locations are on our website. Lanier Plaza is a pet-friendly pickup location in the city. Mary Ross Park... Donnie, do you have that on the... You've got it on the thing that you just gave me. I'm sorry, Commissioners. Our pickup locations for the Need a Ride program are Mary Ross Park, Colonial Mall, United Pentecostal Church, Harris Teeter on St. Simons Island, Bay Harbor Church of God, and Lanier Plaza, which is a pet-friendly pickup location.
Jay, you've got all that. You're gonna be publishing tomorrow?
Yes, sir. And it's also on our website, and it's gonna be included in the press release.
When is that start?
That will start... I'm sorry, that's a great question. We've worked with the school board, and that will start tomorrow at 10:00 and go until 6:00, and then again on Saturday from 10:00 till 6:00.
Okay. All right. Anybody got any other questions? I mean, this is serious and... But hearing none, get a motion to adjourn?
Any executive, sir?
We don't have any executive protection tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion to adjourn the meeting.